Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, May 3rd, 2021, 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. And Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Jordan.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Shalk.
Here.
Commissioner Holliday.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Thank you. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena's City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent Agenda Claims.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Mayor, I recommend you enter a motion of consent to approve the expenditures on April 16th, April 21st, and April 23rd of 2021 in the amounts of $977,470.47 for a total of $1,617,368.27.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move item A on the Consent Agenda Claims.
Second.
Any discussion? And Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to take, ask for public comment on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this topic?
I have no raised hands and I've received no written public comment. So, thank you. Commissioner Holliday.
Hi.
Commissioner Dean. Commissioner Logan.
Hi.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Communications Proposals from Commissioners. Commissioners, what's your will and pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
Just like to take a minute to recognize the Helena Fire Department and the difficult fire that they dealt with. This morning, I happened to be up in the City County Building about the time the fire started. And a number of us were watching, trying to figure out what the dramatic amount of smoke was and ultimately found out it was the Lister Mansion at 315 State. And personal experience, I can tell you those are very difficult fires to deal with and so I appreciate the work done by the Helena Fire Department in addition to the you know, our mutual aid partners that respond as well. In the, in the Police Department, I know provided a great deal of assistance in controlling, controlling the scene there. So I'd just like to take a, just wanted to so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? All right, moving along. Report of the City Attorney.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner, Commissioners, just wanted to let you know, give you a brief update on our discussions with the EPA. As I think Manager Harlow Shalk has let you know, we've been discussing with the EPA an administrative consent order to resolve EPA allegations against the city that it violated its MPDES permit. That's a tenant to our pre-treatment program. That's the regulation of significant and industrial users that discharge to our wastewater treatment plant. We have to have a program in place that monitors and samples their discharges to protect the wastewater treatment plant operations and to protect the discharge ultimately from that plant into the receiving waters. We're nearing the end of those discussions and moving forward, I anticipate that we will be bringing a decision to you regarding litigation potentially in an executive session in the near future. And these, these allegations go back to an audit in 2017 and then a letter of violations that the city received in the summer of last year. So just a heads up for now and I can answer any questions that I can at this point.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Thank you, City Attorney Jordan. City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners and
Good evening.
Thank you. I just wanted to send a congratulations out to our team for their work at the Civic Center last week and the Arbor Day event was very successful. And that also kicked off the celebration of our 100th anniversary of the Civic Center and I also thank you Commissioner Logan for thanking our firefighters today. It was quite an alarm fire and as I understand, no one was hurt. So that is the best resolution of that. I'm sorry though that there was loss of property. And thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Communications from Helen Citizen Council. HCC Rep Dylan Klapmeyer.
Thanks, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. This is Dylan Klapmeyer, the HCC Chair. Right now, the biggest thing that we're working on is the budgeting process. We're looking forward to diving into that with the Commission. We'll be sharing, listening to all of the administrative work sessions and Commission work sessions. We've got two HCC meetings scheduled this month. One on the 13th and one on the 20th to kind of coincide with when those budget work sessions are happening. And we will get our recommendations to you before the end of this month. I think that's all I've got.
Thank you. And just to let you know, Mr. Klapmeyer, would you remind the rest of the Council to forward all questions and requests to the City Manager instead of the employees?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I reminded them of that at our last meeting and yeah, from now on, everything will go through our Budget Committee to Rachel, to the City Manager Harlow Shalk.
Thank you. Regular items. A. Consider a resolution of intention to vacate Powderhorn Court located off Alpine View Drive with Aspen Park at Mountain View Meadows. Director Leland.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. I'll share my screen real quick. This is a unique situation when we're dealing with larger subdivisions. And the applicant, which is still the developer, is asking for basically a change in what the previous previous plan was. As you can look here, is this, East Elm is located over in this, this area. This is where Blue Cross and Blue Shield is located right now and the new light on Highway 12 going around and then you can see all the way up and then the, I think it's 252 that comes across. And this is the area that we're talking about right now. This is the Alpine Drive and then it comes off into a cul-de-sac. It is undeveloped. It does have some utilities that go through it to facilitate some already platted annexed and developed property that is just further south of this area. Then scrolling down, you can see the plat and you can see that the cul-de-sac and what we're talking about right here is the cul-de-sac in this section of the roadway. Where Block 8 is right now, that is City Park property that was donated to the city as part of the subdivision process and that'll come into play is if we vacate property, City Code directs staff of how we are going to allocate the property and dictate the transfer fee. With any vacation, we have a transfer fee that needs to be assessed and either waived by the City Commission or appraised and the fair market value is how we establish that fee. The property owner is asking us, or the applicant is asking us to vacate the property and typically we go at the midpoint of the right of way, half goes to each adjacent property. Because that is how it was taken out of it. It's not real property, deeded property, so we can't sell it as a separate lot. It's a super easement, I guess the best way to put it. There's probably better terms, but it's a it's a super easement that when we vacated, it reverts back to the adjacent properties. Unless there's an agreement with the adjacent property owners to somehow divvied up, basically do a boundary line readjustment so that the property can be divvied up different than 50/50 each way. And that is what the applicant is asking us to do, is basically taking, asking if we could do three quarters of it to his property and then only a quarter of it going to park property. This will help facilitate his plans for the new development that's going to go in with the private streets and some condos in, in the area just located south of Block 8. Now with the transfer fee is how we get involved is we look at market value and in order to save time and money is we look at the Department of Revenue's appraised value. It's basically the tax, tax portion of DOR that puts out the appraised value. And so we look at that. And then we divide half and half. And whatever the square footage is to the adjacent property owner, that's how we come up with the transfer fee. In this case, there is some anomalies and the, and the City Code spells it out of how we address that. On the park property, it comes out to about $2.56 a square foot, almost valued at $475,000 for a little over a four acre parcel. The other adjacent property that is going to be the developed property is classified as grazing and DOR has it valued at $132 for the, another little over four acre parcel. So there's a big discrepancy between the two. When that is the case, to determine the market value, we can either do a third party appraisal to go out to get that, or we can look at a lot of the adjacent properties around there and then come up with an average that is, that is fair, that we, we come up with a fair market value. Looking at it, some of these lots that are smaller than the four acre parcel, you're looking at $4 to $5 a square foot. And then there are some bigger properties that are around the $3 a square foot. So staff determined that it would be an equal to the park property. So we valued the transfer fee of $2.56 for the whole parcel. And that's where we came up with the transfer fee of $43,691.52. Again, this is undeveloped, but we are just following City Code of how we're going forward. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Director Leland. Madam Harlow Shalk? You're muted, I think.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. But wanted to point out a couple additional items underneath this regular items tonight. The first is that the team has implemented a new development review process in agreement with our developers. And before items are brought before the Commission, we are inviting the developers to talk with us before we get in front of the Commission so that they are aware of our recommendations and how we might have arrived at them. And then second, making sure that we're all in understanding of what is coming before the Commission. And so I wanted to let you know that that was implemented on this project as well as the Anderson Village Major Subdivision project as well, that you will hear next and based on that and the conversations that I've had. While I, I do recommend and that's the intention tonight, recommend that the Commission adopt the resolution of intent to amend, excuse me, the resolution of intent to vacate Powderhorn Court. I do not recommend that we add to that resolution of fee for the transfer based on the following, and that is that, that land adjacent in Block 8, which was dedicated by the developer was, has not been developed. And the property that we're vacating to is actually also not developed. So the value is actually only because of the zoning. And at this point, the need for the vacation is related to our ask that they maintain compliance with the Fire Code distance requirements on the road itself. So while there's no change to the resolution tonight, I wanted to make sure and make you aware that the team has done an excellent job of following our City Code and our processes. And this one is an anomaly that I don't believe we have seen before based on conversations with the team. There are other vacations that take place. But in the case of this zoning and then the lack of development taking place, ultimately it makes the greatest sense to not charge that additional fee. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission?
So I guess for the manager or Mr. Leland, what's the additional fee we're referring to? What's the total amount?
Mayor, City Commissioner, is that it's the transfer fee that we're talking about. We're talking about the $43,691 is to ask to waive that because this is an undeveloped piece of property and basically just switching the subdivision plan that, that the developer had thought of instead of having it as a dedicated street. Would rather have it as a private street. And since nothing has been in there, that's where the recommendation to waive that fee comes from. And one other that I'd like to point out is there is a mistake in the recommended motion is to set a public hearing date for May 17th, not May 3rd. I apologize for that one. That slipped by because we missed it or we had to push this one, one meeting. So I apologize for that and just make sure that with the recommended motion, we don't say May 3rd.
So maybe a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
So, given the anomalous nature of the valuation of this property and from time to time, you know, DOR's valuations fluctuate in their actual relation to the value of land and structures in the city. Is there a, is there a suggestion from either Public Works or the Manager or the Attorney's Office about whether this ordinance should be relooked at at some point in the future irrespective of what we do tonight with this property?
I can answer that if you're ready.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the City Attorney's Office and myself and our community development team as well as our Public Works Director. Not all situations are life for life when we do these types of vacations. This one is a definite, a definite anomaly with a particular tip to the point that it was a dedication from the owner who is the same as the zoning across the street. So we're basically returning those dollars. But yes, in this situation, we need to write down how it has happened and then document it for the future. But also there is conversation of revision to the code in light of this distinction. But we do not tonight have the language for you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussions from the Commission? Okay. No comments or question. I'll, I'll seek a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to consider a resolution of intention to vacate Powderhorn Court located off Alpine View Drive with Aspen Park at Mountain View Meadows and set a public meeting for May 17th, 2021.
Mayor, Mayor Collins, this is Thomas. I just wanted to jump in, request maybe for a clarification. Commissioner Dean, is it, is it your intent to, to consider waiving the transfer fee? Because I
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Has been any final discussion from the Committee, Commission? Do you have any public comments? On this topic?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I, I do have a couple of hands raised, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
First up, I have Mark Runkel.
Go ahead, Mr. Runkel.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioners and staff. I wanted to, I have a page of useless notes at this point, but I do want to say thanks to the staff for recognizing that this is an unusual situation. I think these 26 condominium units that we're doing this for a project should generate well in the in excess of 150,000 in annual real estate taxes. And hopefully that'll be better than getting some money for a vacation. Also, this project has it has some offsite costs that, that push a developer a little bit because there's 430 feet of Alpine View Drive Collector Street that has to be constructed and it really will only serve these 26 condos since to the west, there's a drainage, nothing can be built there. And then of course, to the north is the park lot. So it has enough, enough extra costs in it as it is. And of course, we try to be as frugal as we can with our customers and their housing costs. So with that, I just want to say I also agree with the City Manager that it will be very helpful for us if we have a little more procedure before the Commission meeting to work with the staff. So that it's, it's very stressful, I think, for a developer to be in front of you with a different opinion on something than, than the staff has. We know that could still happen, but we'd like to try to avoid it whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runkel. Madam Clerk.
Next, Mayor and Commissioners, I have Jeff Larson.
Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Jeff Larson. I'm the engineer representing Mr. Runkel and I just had one other topic that I wanted to bring up.
Is it about this topic?
Yes, on, on the vacation.
Okay.
Yes, and it, after we submitted the vacation, we went to design. And during design, we discovered that we needed a little space in the corner for a stop sign. And so we're asking if we could add another 25 square feet or so to the vacation for that stop sign to create a little space for it. It's right at the intersection of Alpine Drive with Powderhorn Court. And that's all I have, have to add on, on the stop sign issue. I, I will say, you know, just to reinforce some of the ideas that Mark brought up, that this is a really good deal for the city, the vacation is. You know, in addition to the tax money, you're also, you've got a street that you no longer have to maintain and or in the future reconstruct as, as it ages. And so I think all in all, the city is going to benefit from this vacation. So that's, that's all I had. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have no other hands raised and I've received no written public con, comment on this item.
Thank you. Would you proceed then?
Commissioner Holliday. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. B. Consider a final plat for the Anderson Village Major Subdivision, creating 18 lots from 5.76 acres and to accept the dedication to the city of the property and public improvements so designated the area for property legally described as lots 8, 9, and 13 of the Anderson Business Park subdivision as shown in CUS number 3050024 in the records of the clerk and recorder of Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Director Hagen?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to let Michael McConnell, the staff planner, present this this evening with your approval.
Thank you. You have the floor, Mr. McConnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here tonight asking consideration of the Anderson Village Major Subdivision final plat. Here you can see a vicinity map. This is generally located northeast of Custer and McHugh along Bedrock Drive and Tarmac and Lane. Just a brief overview, this is 18 lots from just under six acres. I can see the range from .15 to .43 acres. They are creating one new street, Nighthawk Street. And that name has been approved by so the current land use, as you can see in the photo is
Mr. McConnell, I think you're fading in and out. Would you go closer to the microphone, please?
Sure, sorry about that. So, just to backtrack a little bit, they are creating one new street, Nighthawk Street, and runs roughly through the middle of those three lots. As you can see in the photo, the current land use is vacant. And the current zone is RO. There is no proposed zone change. RO allows for a for numerous uses, both residential and light commercial, obviously that sort of thing. It is in town. It is surrounded by residential and commercial zone districts. It is worth mentioning that the growth policy that we updated this past year is supportive of this type of infill development. It's located in close proximity to employment centers, to different services and amenities. It's located on city infrastructure. And it will take advantage of existing street networks and wet utility networks as well. So there were several conditions of approval that the Commission set forth with a preliminary plat. You can see them there. Stop signs at both ends of the proposed street has been installed. Road ID signs installed at all new intersections. They also have been installed. There is a new storm drainage facility that needs, still needs to be dedicated to the city. And that will happen immediately after the filing of the final plat. How the easement is worded or how easements are worded, you need the final plat filing number to include on the easement in order for it to be effective. There are some other requirements as well. They have their infrastructure either installed and approved by the City of Carolina Public Works Department or financially guaranteed. And the chip seal for Nighthawk and some ADA ramps are the improvements that have yet to be completed. And the parkland dedication, they opted for a cash in lieu of land and a figure of $108,130 was approved by the City of Carolina Parks Department. So staff is recommending approval. So moved to approve the final plat for the Anderson Village Major Subdivision, creating 18 lots from 5.76 acres and accept the dedication to the city of the property and public improvements so designated thereon for property legally described as lots 8, 9, and 13 of the Anderson Business Park subdivision as shown in COS 3050024 in the records of the clerk and recorder. Thank you, Mayor. If you have any questions for me, you have the answer now.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I've received no written public comment and I have no hands raised on this item.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the final plat for the Anderson Village Major Subdivision, creating 18 lots from 5.76 acres and to accept the dedication to the city of the property and public improvements so designated thereon for property legally described as lots 8, 9, and 13 of the Anderson Business Park subdivision as shown in COS 3050024 in the records of the clerk and recorder of Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution, amended resolution number 20595, declaring a state of local disaster emergency to allow the city commission to meet in person in the chambers for regular meetings and continue to meet via Zoom for administrative meetings. Director Sampson, Superintendent Sampson, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Troy Sampson, Community Facility Superintendent. Tonight, we're discussing that the present situation for the commission meetings. Currently, the city commission meetings are not being held in the chambers because of the declaration of a state of local disaster and emergency, which was adopted on March 13th of 2020. As a result, the city commission has, except for two notable exceptions, been conducting its regular and administrative meetings via the Zoom online platform only. At the December 14th administrative meeting, we reached consensus direction to proceed with an amendment to that resolution. In-person meetings could be held in the commission chambers with guidance from Lewis Clark Public Health. Lewis Clark Public Health reviewed our plan on March 2nd of 2021 and has determined that these meetings may be managed with physical distancing and other controls, which we propose to put in place. Some of those controls are limiting meeting room occupancy to 28 people total to maintain social distancing. The installation of plexiglass dividers between commission and staff seating, where six-foot separation cannot be achieved. Masks would be required for anyone unable to physically distance by at least six feet. And currently, the county health mask mandate is in effect, which requires masks for all meeting attendees. Signage is also posted at the entrances of the meeting room, reminding folks that they cannot enter if they have any COVID symptoms or have been in contact with a positive case within 10 days. Hand sanitizer and extra masks are available at the entrances also. Cleaning and sanitizing any high-touch contact points will be performed. Disposable microphone covers will be changed out between users. Custodial staff will clean and sanitize all surfaces after the meeting. The seating for the audience has been set up and meets the six-foot distancing requirement. We'll also continue to offer the virtual meetings in addition to in-person. At this time, staff has set up the necessary equipment in the chamber that allows for public staff participation over the Zoom online platform. Additional suggestions from the public health to help control numbers, or, you know, if we had an agenda item that was likely to draw a crowd, we could schedule a time so that the people that are interested in that item can attend that agenda item and then leave so that others can join in for the next agenda item. And we would try to leave adequate time between agenda items so that people can leave and enter without too much gathering. We'll be sure to... Be sure that the waiting area outside the chambers is marked for social distancing. The other option would be to consider moving to another location to accommodate a larger crowd. So in addition to in-person participation, the city will continue to offer an online participation option due to its popularity with the public. The advantage of moving back to in-person meetings would put us back into a normal process of conducting business and at the same time maintains the Zoom environment with closed captioning that the community appreciates. The staff's recommendation is move to approve resolution, amending resolution number 20595, declaring a state of local disaster emergency to allow the city commission to meet in person in the chambers for regular meetings and continue to meet via Zoom for administrative meetings. And I'm available for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Superintendent Sampson. Do you have any comments or questions from the commission?
You have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Since our admin meetings will stay on Zoom, does that also mean all of our upcoming working sessions are also staying on Zoom?
I'm going to refer that question to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Dean. That question and answer is yes. We will be having those in the Zoom environment as well.
Superintendent Sampson, I know that during the State of the City's address, it was very difficult for people listening to Zoom on Zoom to understand and hear me because the microphones and systems in the chamber was not working right. Has that been corrected?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, yes. We have tested all the equipment. We made some changes to the configuration of the equipment and it has tested out very clear. We did it with some internal staff with IT. They were on the meeting as participants. And it was a good product that I think everybody will be happy with.
And you also mentioned the possibility of a larger crowd we may have to relocate. And will that relocation entail that the service is relocated into the event or to the larger hall?
Mr. Mayor, that was just a suggestion from the Health Department. I think we would have to take that on a case-by-case basis, depending on the location if we were to move.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments or questions from the commission? Do you have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Mary Ann Dunwell has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Representative Dunwell.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city, officials, city manager and staff. My name is Mary Ann Dunwell. I live at 2811 Alexis Avenue in Helena. And I just want to weigh in on this. I want to express my sincere appreciation for the precautions, the protections, the rigorous attention to public health and safety that you, the city county health department, the board of health, have demonstrated during this pandemic. The pandemic, knock on wood, is waning. Half of Americans have at least one vaccination, one COVID shot. And Montana is doing pretty well with the COVID shots. Our case numbers are decreasing and I think it's time now to move into in-person meetings with the protections that you've outlined and also an opportunity for someone, if they wanted to, still participate remotely. So those are my two cents. I would ask you to retain the remote option from now on. I think it allows folks who are not able to make it down to City Hall to still engage in their government. And, you know, I think it's one of the good things that... One of the few good things that are coming out of the pandemic is an opportunity for the public to engage more in their government. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative Dunwell. Do we have any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have no other hands raised and no written public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 20595, declaring a state of local disaster emergency to allow the city commission to meet in person in the chambers for regular meetings and continue to meet via Zoom for administrative meetings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Public hearings. Consider a resolution, amending resolution number 19818 that create a special improvement lighting district number 222 to alter the boundaries by adding 16 street lights and to remove property in SLID number 222 in the city of Helena, Montana. Director Danielson?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I have a public hearing resolution in front of the commission to amend resolution 1918, adding additional streetlights to special lighting improvement district number 222. This is in the Mountain View Meadows subdivision area. And this is a bit of a two-part ask. The first is adding 16 more lights and new parcels to the district. And the second ask is to remove property known as tract 282, property ID 45445, approximately 11.012 acres from the district by removing that land from the district that was created in the Third Amendment to this lighting district that would push the costs of the lighting districts off to the rest of the homeowners in the district. We brought this before the commission and asked for tonight as a public hearing. I will let you know that I have received and the clerk's office has received a total of five protests for this particular resolution. They are available and the clerk is willing to share each of those in a PDF tonight, although I can summarize them for you. They were all pretty much fairly similar. This particular amendment to the district will increase costs to the homeowners that remain in the district by about 37% from what they are currently paying. The condo areas believe that there's a disproportionate share of the costs that are being allocated to them. How that works is the whole area of the condo development is divided equally amongst the condos. So you may have a condo that's about 1,600, 1,700 square feet, but they're paying for over 10,000 square feet based on their proportionate share of the condo area in the district. So there were comments that they believed that there was a disproportionate share of the cost being passed off to them. The condos also indicated that they're paying for cost of street lights, although they do not have any street lights in front of their condos and they are instead required to have their garage lights on for illumination during the evening time. In addition to the increase, there are those that in the district believed that their costs continue to rise every time an addition to the district is added and they feel like that is a burden to them, especially those that have been in the district from phase one. And now this is the Fifth Amendment to the district, adding additional costs to those that were originally coming into the district. Those is kind of a summary of the protests that I have received. Again, there were a total of five. I also added from requests from the last meeting what the assessments would be to each... An approximate assessment of what would the cost be to each parcel owner. And I added that to the resolution and notation along with the other district lighting maps that are there showing where the lights are located and in addition to where the property owned by the developers requesting to be taken out. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm here to hopefully be able to answer them.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Questions or comments for the director or the city manager? Any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I do have several hands raised. The first is Mary Ann Dunwell.
Go ahead, Representative Dunwell.
Thank you again, Mayor Collins, Commissioners and staff, city manager. My name is Mary Ann Dunwell. I live at 2811 Alexis Avenue in Helena. And it is part of the Mountain View Meadows development. And I am weighing in in favor of this, even though it'll cost me another 48 bucks. I'm weighing in in favor. I don't like it and I could do some other things with that 48. However, and my house is a small house. It's not a condo. So it's sort of on the other side of the development, right across from the city park there, which, not to get off track, but I really would love the city park to have a restroom. We have so many people using that park, but let me get back on track to the lights. One of the reasons I moved here is because it had street lighting, because it had sidewalks. It was a walkable community. And so that's where lights come in. They're a public safety issue. They're a public amenity. So I don't mind forking out some more money so that the other side of the development can have street lights. You know, we all use- You know, we all use the streetlights in one way or another. When we drive down the street, when we walk in the evenings, it's in the early mornings, whether or not it's right, the light is right outside our home or not. So again, it's a question of everybody paying their fair share for a public amenity. Having said that, I wish our city would look at comprehensive street lighting for the entire city. Because as it is now, there's an inequity. Some parts of the city don't have illumination and it's it's kind of dangerous, frankly. You know, rather than these piecemeal lighting districts, which I know go way, way back to the origin of Helena, I've already discussed this with some of you. Rather than that, I think we need to sort of move into the 24th century and do a citywide public streetlight plan. That is if the legislature still lets you pass an ordinance like that. That's a little joke, sadly, but true. So so yes, I'm in favor of this. The part of the giving up attractive land, I'm not familiar with that, but but the streetlights is they are why I'm weighing in. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Dunwell. Do we have other hands up, raised hands, rather?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I would ask the next individual to please identify themselves with their full name. They're listed only as Bob.
You have the floor. Bob, would you give your full name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Robert Brown and my wife Deborah is with me. We live at, or we have a condo at 2877 Vista Avenue in the subdivision. And I have submitted a written opposition to two aspects of the proposed amendment to the current resolution, the SILD that's before you. I believe Ms. Danielson has done a good job of summarizing the thrust of what the concerns are. I would like to say to Ms. Dunwell, we have no streetlights on Vista Avenue or Vista View, once it comes into being. And there is a third street in our area where there are no streetlights. Now, on the outer edges of it, if we walk around someone's house, we can see a streetlight, but there are no, Contour Avenue, there are no streetlights. We currently are required, are asked, I'm not sure if it's mandate or just a strong suggestion, to leave our garage lights on at night so we have lighting for safety purposes. So my concern is that I favor streetlights. I, like you, think that they're an amenity that should be everywhere in the community. But we are being asked in the condo area to pay roughly 51% more than the average other tenant or property owner within this subdivision for their lights. Now it varies, but according to data from your office or from the city that we're going to pay about 269 and the average is going to pay about 170 something, somewhere in that neighborhood, for roughly $90 more for no lights. That struck me as peculiar. Now, we have been told that our street is a private street. But I don't understand why we couldn't have streetlights on there. So that's my first concern is that I'd gladly pay for it if we had them. Number two.
Would you try to wrap this up, please, Ms. Bob?
Yes. Yes, there is a request by the owner or the developer to remove over 479,000 square feet that is currently being paid for by the developer for the streetlights and shifting it on to everybody else that lives in the subdivision. Ironically, unlike my street, which has no lights, that street that goes by the property that's being, the 11.012 acres, has eight lights on the street across from it. Actually, four lights are on the property or adjacent to the property and four across the street. So I don't understand why there would be a shifting from that property onto everyone else when clearly that property benefits from lights, unlike those of us in the condo area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Mark Runkel.
Go ahead, Mr. Runkel. You have the floor.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I guess I'll start by saying that we do believe that streetlights are an important and sought-after amenity by our residents and the new home buyers, much as Ms. Dunwell has presented. The benefit, as I see it, of street lighting is a bit like Mary Ann said, it's more for those that drive on the streets or walk on the sidewalks. And then, of course, the general safety and security of everyone. None of these benefits accrue to a developer for a large undeveloped lot that is adjacent to a roadway. Regarding the updated cost per square foot of $2.56 per square foot, new streetlights are assessed a cost at the time that they're installed and they reflect current costs. They are not adjusted on a continuous basis for inflation, so they stay at that cost, which inflation tends to make that cost less significant over time, if that makes sense. Now, Mountain View Meadows has the newest streetlights in Helena. The next newest streetlights are the Stone Meadows subdivision, which is lighting district 220. Their rate is 2.15 cents per square foot. The average streetlight age there is quite a few years more than Mountain View Meadows LD 222, which has been, as you can see, updated a number of times like that.
Would you try to wrap up, please?
Yes, I will. Anyway, this amount that Stone Meadows pays is more than what our residents pay now, but less than what they would in the future, but not a lot less. So I've tried to be fair about everything that I do and I don't find any other of the 50 lighting districts that have a developer that's being assessed for an undeveloped lot. And so I guess I'll pass on, except that Mr. Brown, for example, when the next group of condos which are being built now are installed, his rates will drop by 50% roughly. And so a lot of that will be taken care of in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runkel. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the next individual has provided only the name owner. I would ask that they provide their name for the record.
Thank you. Mr. Owner, would you please provide your full name and address, please? Mr. Owner or Ms. Owner, whichever.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner. I believe they're talking about me. My name is Catherine Monroe. I live in Antelope Trace at 2771 Stacia Avenue in the Mountain View Meadows. I have objection to this request by Mr. Runkel. And I, Antelope Trace was one of the first developments up here and my house was one of the first houses built. And at the time we were put in, we had streetlights put in and we had to pay for them all ourselves. There was no other part of the subdivision that we could pass our taxes off to. So I find it very disconcerting that Mr. Runkel is trying to pass off taxes on to those of us who are already established in here, rather than having his new development pay for those taxes, the Craftsman Meadow, the Craftsman area. I also find it interesting that he wants to take his land out of it, even though he's got streetlights along his property. And I think that that is unfair and I don't see why I should have to pay for his taxes. He can pass those taxes on to the people that buy the property and right now it is a boom real estate market and he is benefiting from it. So I don't see that I should have to pay his taxes plus craftsmen's taxes. If this continues every time they add someone, that my taxes are going to go up. And I'd really like to have him explain why he thinks the condo taxes are going to go down. Then I, I just don't see that this is an equitable solution to anything and I object to this proposal that he has. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no other hands raised. I have received one written public comment from James and I'm very sorry, I'm not sure on the last name, Servo. Is there data that supports the claim that streetlights reduce crime rates or vehicle accidents?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any finer comments from the commission?
Just wanted to quickly.
Oh, slow down. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
I just quickly, I think I know the answer to this, but just want to confirm that the Lexington lights that do meet the dark skies ordinance as well. Is that correct?
Director Danielson or city manager Hollosho?
I don't know the answer to that. I do know that the, the lights out there are newer lights and they're, they're the LED lights. So I believe that they do meet the dark sky requirement, but I'm not positive at this time. Sorry.
Manager Hollosho.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Dean. I'm actually not sure. We'll have to get back to you with an answer on that unless, and I have reached out to Director Haugen, if she's available. She may have an answer, but I do not have one at this time.
And also, Mayor, I'll just note, Mr. Runkel raised his hand when that question.
And I was about to acknowledge that when. Mr. Runkel, do you have an answer for us on that question?
I believe I do. We
Please, go ahead.
Okay, we worked with Northwestern Energy and these are Lexington lights. They're four-sided. So in order to meet the ordinance and not have trespass, I believe it's more than is it one or one and a half foot candles on to the next property, which is a very low standard and difficult. But we measured, tried some screens and they, they put a screen in the top portion of them in the one that faces in toward the properties that cuts that light off just beyond or kind of at the edge of the sidewalk.
Okay.
And they've all been updated to LED lights and with those screens in them.
Thank you, Mr. Runkel. Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for the manager, I believe. So a couple of the folks that protested or that spoke and maybe included in the written comments talked about the idea of their being assessed for a benefit that they're not getting. Is there any adjustment that can be made for those property owners?
Manager Hollosho.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Logan, as I understand it, our evaluation included a review by our team on the appropriate method of assessment calculation. So that has been confirmed as to whether or not it has been calculated correctly. Now, whether or not the second layer, which you discuss, which is the, the outcome of those being assessed and whether or not they receive benefit from it, that is not part of the calculation, as I understand it, but I would defer to Ms. Danielson if it is. I do not believe it it actually is a part of that calculation. And then last, oh, no, I think that's the, that was my last piece of it. If you have any clarification, Ms. Danielson.
Director Danielson?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner Logan, the calculation is for these light districts and for all of the light districts throughout Helena are based on the proportionate square feet that the parcel owner has. Condos are a little bit different because they have a common area of the condos and then that entire common area is divided equally among the condo owners. And so they pay for their proportionate share of the condo area that they own. But that is the calculation that is processed for all of the light districts in Helena and the, whether or not the assessed benefit to each parcel owner does not come into the calculation.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Do you have any other comments from the commission?
Just a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you again to Director Danielson for the summary. It was very helpful to kind of just get a sense of the objections that had been submitted. Can you remind me how many total property owners are there in this?
I'm sorry, there, there are, I would have to do a recount, but I think it's somewhere in the area of about 165 parcel owners.
Okay, thank you. And then this is just kind of a process question. I appreciate the summary. Do we receive the, the comments that are submitted either in support or opposition in advance of this meeting in some form?
No, we didn't.
Yeah, so the, the parcel, I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Loughlin, the parcel owners are given a deadline to submit their protest to the city. It's shortly before this meeting, so there's, by the time I have to get this resolution and all of the documents uploaded into Knowis and available for public comment, we have not gathered at that point in time, all of the protests that have been submitted. It is, it would have been, you're right, it would have been nice to have given the, the commission the time to look at each written document. And we have another light district coming up for resolution and I will see, I will work with the city clerk's office to see if we can submit those to the commission prior to the meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, Mayor, I have one question for Mr. Runkel, if that's okay.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. So hopefully Mr. Runkel is still available. One just quick question in relation to the comment that you made around condos. So as you all are developing additional condo, you mentioned that that would result in the, in the reduction of the lighting district for other property owners. I assume that's sort of similarly because of the way that Director Danielson described it, that that amount is split amongst those, all of those that are part of the, of the condo unit. Is that right? And we might need the clerk to give him access again.
Mr. Runkel, are you available? Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Mr. Runkel.
Okay, yes. Thank you, I am. It is basically, as Director Danielson said, that the, but it's by lot and there are roughly four or five condo lots. And my comment specifically related to Mr. Brown's lot, which he has about 10,000 square feet to get assessed. But that lot will have six new buildings, 12 new units on it. It has 14 right now. And so that it will, his area will, on a condo lot, they just divide the number of units into the area and that is what gets assessed. So his assessment will be cut almost in half the next time that things get updated and these condos are finished. They're, they're all under construction now. the next time that things get updated and these condos are finished. They're they're all under construction now.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday? Geez, that went blank.
The, for either Ms. Danielson or the city attorney, there was a mention of the condo development and not having streetlights in front of some of those units and those units being adjacent to private drives. Does the city install or deal with street lighting on private drives?
Director Danielson?
Yes, Mayor Commissioner Halliday, I believe that private owners can, for private roads, can petition to the city to have streetlights installed on their road and create a new district.
Thank you.
And, um, you know, just a just a comment on the condos. You know, going back to Commissioner Logan's question about equity, you know, condos are a funky little creature under Montana property law and sort of the way we divide them up and separate them from their land to the extent that they count as an individual lot. Right? In theory, they are getting the benefit of the streetlights relative to their square footage in the entire district. They just happen to have taken one parcel and carved it into private roads, different than a public street, right? If there was a public street in there, we might have put lights in this district to begin with. Um, and you just got to remember that it cuts both ways for condos. If you recall last year, when the church up near Stone Meadows came in, right? This commission asked staff to work with those property owners in order to condoize their property so that they could reduce their assessments on a square foot basis. Um, it it just really is a case by case basis with condos, right? So to do something with condos here might impact the application to a condo someplace else. Um, we apply these assessments to every condo in the placer in a manner that results in the placer paying, I think, tens of thousands more than an apartment building. Right? There's inequities in our system based on the condo situation. I I don't, wouldn't recommend this commission pursue an approach where we take one individual owner and say, if you can see a streetlight out your window, you're getting the advantage of a district. If you can't, you're not. Um, if we have concerns about equities with regard to condos, which there are issues, again, some benefits, some don't. Um, that's really something more for this commission to take up as a comprehensive package. Otherwise, we just pick winners and losers based on the the intricacies of a a question in front of us. So, um, you know, we're just applying this based on state law and the way the condos are divided up as parcels. And sometimes the the rub is against condos, sometimes it's in their favor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any finer comments from the Commission? If not, oh, go ahead, Director, I mean, City Manager Hallashaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note there are some distinctions within the comments of Commissioner Halliday that we would add in light of apartments and condos that might be different in the assessments. Just to underscore it, it's more complex than and each property has to be reviewed individually. So just wanted to underscore that those are all different types and uses and those are assessed in different methods that city attorney Joden could provide greater detail for in a summary, if you would like, later at another time.
Thank you, Manager Hallashaw. Any finer comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. From a Commissioner?
Mayor, I'm happy to do it. I just am trying to get back to the page. Sorry. I will
Thank you.
I will move to approve a resolution to amend resolution number one nine eight one eight that created special improvement lighting district number two two two. Amend S I L D number two 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 to add sixteen additional lights to the assessment area and remove property known as tract two A two, property ID number four five four four five, G E O code zero five one eight 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 three five two zero nine zero one zero 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 from the district. I got the, I I drew the short strap.
Okay, well, I'm still holding up for a second.
Second.
And Mayor, I'll just make a quick comment, if that's okay?
Yeah, I was about to say, any finer comments from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Olafman.
Um, I just want to say thank you again to the Director Danielson and all the information that we received on this. I mean, I think given the number of property owners in in the district, um, while I certainly appreciate the concerns and objections we've gotten from a few, um, I do think this is an important investment that we're making. Um, want to again thank Mr. Runkel, the developer, for moving forward with it. Um, and I'm comfortable supporting it tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Olafman. Any finer comments from the Commission? Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I thought I had unmuted myself. I had not. Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lockman?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Yes, and I, uh, Madam Clerk, item on our agenda, it delta, was it pulled? Or is it still on? Because it's not on the staff agenda and I I think I jumped over that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I actually, you are beating me to the punch, Mr. Mayor. So there, it appears to be that there's a discrepancy between both the official agenda that's online and the online agenda that is just simply the front page. Uh, this item, as you say, regular item D, was intended to be moved to a separate meeting um, to the next official meeting. So in an interest for public participation and transparency, I recommend that we continue with that plan and not entertain item D tonight.
Roger that. At this time, excuse me, I heard
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I voted against that previous motion.
Which previous motion?
Um, relative to the lighting district.
Oh, okay. Madam Clerk, did you get that?
My apologies, Commissioner Logan. I think I heard you incorrectly. Thank you for correcting the record. The motion carries four four to one.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, Mary Ann Dunwell has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Representative Dunwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Commission, I'll be brief, uh, because I know it's the end of a long day. I am a state representative and we just completed the twenty twenty one legislative session. And, um, there were quite a few pieces of legislation that were passed. Um, some have been signed by the governor, some will most likely be signed by the governor. Um, and these pieces of legislation really chip away at local communities being able to pass their own ordinances, govern themselves according to their community needs. From dismantling public health authority, that was, we have a couple of bills that sailed through that way. Banning inclusive zoning in housing, prohibiting vaping, anything that you wanted to do prohibiting vaping or or regulating firearm, firearms. And if you wanted to create a sanctuary city, I mean, none of these things could be done with the legislation that passed. Um, I I'm simplifying it quite a bit. I I mean, there's some ins and outs. But my ask of you is that you consider litigation because some of these, I believe, violate our Montana constitution and and also your ability to govern, um, you know, as the city of Helena. Uh, and and I'm offering my services if you need, um, need help, institutional memory, that kind of thing, or even as an amicus. But but I would hope you you litigate these in court. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Dunwell. Do we have any other comments from the public? Madam Clerk, do we have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I've received no other written public comment and I have no raised hands at this time.
Okay, well, we will give another forty five seconds and then move forward. Any finer comments from the Commission? If not, this meeting is adjourned.